Meeting will come to order. For public information, a copy of the Nebraska Opens Meeting Act is posted in the back of this meeting room on the east wall. It's the current version. We'll have roll call.
Harris.
Here.
Knapper.
Here.
Meyer.
Here.
Reisig.
Here.
Blue.
Here.
We can all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, next item is to approve the agenda and/or consider any modifications. The primary item on the agenda tonight is budget discussion. Do we have a motion?
I move that we approve the agenda.
One second. I have a motion and a second to approve the agenda as presented. Call the roll.
Blue.
Yes.
Knapper.
Yes.
Reisig.
Yes.
Meyer.
Yes.
All right, so the agenda is approved. We'll go to the first item, the only item, I think, budget discussion. And Lisa, did you want to give any information as we start here, or what's your thoughts?
I did hear, I sent out an email, I think last Wednesday regarding our meeting today and tomorrow, and I heard back from the following people, our following departments, county clerk election, weed department, road department, veterans aid fund, and the com center. Departments that I've made some additional adjustments to. Tax ask is down to, whatever, yeah, sixteen million, forty-seven thousand, and we had a goal of either fourteen million, five seventy, or depending on fifteen million, two ninety-three, unless we even take some other exceptions that are going to be prior year exception, but that's what I have.
We can't be talking off mic.
Now, remember, we need to talk on the mic as much possible. I know, Ms. Lisa, that's kind of tough for you right there, but we need to talk into the mic best possible, and commissioners as well. So let's be sure that I didn't print that email off. Ms. Lisa, let me see if I had it wrote down, but I'm not sure.
Would you like me to see if it's right?
So that email you sent out maybe had it, you had...
Yes.
If we...
I'm looking for it.
We're looking for fifteen million, four ninety-four, if I remember correctly. That be true?
Their property tax asking.
Did you want me to read it?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, county commissioners have met on five different days during the last two weeks to discuss the annual budget. Some of you have been asked to participate in these discussions. We have so many needs, but limited resources to meet all of them. As of now, we still have just under one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars to carve from the budget, as to keep our levy flat with last year. However, to stay out of the pink postcard meeting, to be settled on September twenty-second, we would need to carve out one million, six hundred and eighty thousand dollars. I believe with three votes to two, we are working towards keeping our levy requests flat, so the one million, one hundred and fifteen thousand dollars still needs to be removed. However, if department heads are not willing to assist, commissioners will work towards the pink postcard goal. If that was how I finished the conversation, or how understood you all. We need you all to take another long, hard look at your requests. Please submit any updates to me in the next couple of days. Our next discussions will be on Monday and Tuesday, starting at three o'clock. If your budget reflects a percentage increase of more than three percent from last year to this year, be prepared to defend your increase. This is the column highlighted yellow. Also, prepare if you manage a budget over five hundred thousand dollars. If cuts do not come from the department heads, the commissioners will have to make the decisions. Please review your requests and seriously review your staffing needs. Take a look at your employees' job descriptions. Are we maximizing our employee resources? Are we just maintaining the status quo? We do not, we want to consider a reduction in force, but future state, it could be a reality. Thank you, everyone, for your assistance with these difficult decisions. And then I had where we were standing last week.
And as of last week, wasn't it sixteen million, two zero seven?
Something like that, and I'm sorry if my...
And now you're down to sixteen, zero, four, seven.
Yeah.
So apparently those one, two, three, four, five departments that you've heard from, we've cut approximately one hundred and fifty thousand. And so we're still, if we're, if we're trying to get down to the fifteen million, four ninety-four, I think that's where I'm at.
Fifteen million, two ninety-three.
Yeah, fifteen, two ninety-three.
To keep the levy flat.
At the point three, six, seven, basically.
Yeah.
But if that's the case, then we're still looking at eight hundred thousand, almost nine hundred thousand.
Took Robert's numbers a little bit. Everybody, did you look at, everybody look at what Robert had proposed to us last week? Was that in the email?
I looked at that email.
He just gave us a thought, you know, process and it kind of works.
Well, there's no doubt, and I had looked at the four or five biggest budgets, which obviously the sheriff's is, wait, so I think the biggest ones that we have are the sheriffs, detention, roads, oh, I just marked them here, possibly Dave's. Yeah, com center, did I say com center? No, I didn't. Com center, they're another, so those are some of the biggest ones that we have. And I think, so part of the story or recommendation was that we look at some of those biggest ones, and if we take a percentage of those, that then the numbers start to come down quicker than some of the other areas. And I know some departments have already helped in some areas, and I understand that. So I know we have you guys here. I don't know whether anyone's here to talk about some, yeah, Dave, I knew you were ready earlier, weren't you? So why don't you tell us, Dave Gunnar, where you think you're at?
Well, I was looking at hiring two lawyers. One dropped out due to some physical problems, and tests are coming up in September. Didn't think it was the time for him to make a move. So of my two hundred and twenty thousand, I think we can knock off sixty-seven-five, and probably, I'm guessing, another twenty-five thousand for, when you take into consideration the health, group life, dental, HSA contributions, county sheriff's retirement, and social security. So I think I can safely knock off ninety thousand on mine. Other attorney, I'm still hopeful that I'm going to be able to get that lawyer, and mine's been low for the last four years, substantially lower, and has been pretty consistent over the last four years, but that's because I've been short-staffed, and I haven't had, I haven't put in for an extra lawyer because I didn't see any expectation of finding anybody. And it just so happens that this year I did.
How about your contract labor?
Oh, yeah, I'm getting rid of one of the attorneys, that's thirty-six thousand.
Can we deduct that?
Okay. I think he already did deduct that, but I went with him just telling us that his person isn't coming. I didn't know if that changed that status.
No, I'm still.
Okay.
So Lisa, are you making that on our, on the fly here?
Trying.
Those changes?
Trying.
You know, and I don't know there are changes I can make. I mean, you can just make up numbers, I guess, and lower my, like, say I'm going to spend zero dollars on...
What about your office staff?
My office staff, I mean, we're fully staffed, and I don't see any reduction in force as being appropriate. My child support looks a little unusual, and that's because I put my highest-paid attorney over there. So on the salary, it looks like that's a big expense, but the reason I do that is because we get reimbursed by the federal government for how much time he spends. I'd rather have it at that rate as opposed to somebody who's working part-time, making thirty-six thousand.
Dave, when you're fully staffed, how many attorneys are you talking about?
Me and five full-time. I've got two full-time right now.
Okay.
If I hire this one, I'll be three full-time, I'll be too short. But I can get rid of, like I said, one of my part-time, because that's just not working out.
So your, your end number is going to be what, Dave?
I didn't run it. Lisa?
I'm trying. I took out sixty-seven thousand, quickly redid retirement and social security, which comes out to be about the same, which hasn't changed there, what you had reported, and brought your health insurance down about nine or ten thousand. I don't know when you added that in, or how you handled that.
Yeah, I estimated, is it sixty-seven-five on the salary?
Okay.
I was looking at closer to ninety.
That's what the change would be?
Yeah.
I have seventy-nine thousand.
You remove seventy-nine thousand?
Ish, yeah, I think so. If we didn't already have, I think we had some removed the other day already.
He had ninety thousand.
That is, you know, just...
Like I said, if I go calculate retirement by taking it times point six, seven, five, I'd come up with basically the same number you already had, so I can bring it down lower, but...
Should do that.
And social security a little bit lower than that, or about sixty-two thousand, four three seven.
Anyway, those are the cuts I can make. On the autopsy cost, I mean, it's fifty thousand. I don't know that we're going to spend fifty thousand. I know since Dr. Shilky left, it's been substantially more. That's obvious, because we got to transport him someplace. I may be able to take off twenty grand off that if we can get, use the front range and get them to take our autopsies, and that's going to reduce our transportation by quite a bit. So Lisa, you can take that off. That's got to get us close to a hundred thousand, right?
I'm sorry. I got to mention, Charlie asked me to do something, so... And you said, which line item, autopsies?
Yeah.
To what?
Thirty thousand.
Thirty. All right.
So how much, do you know how much that changed his total then?
Yeah, I'm now at nine percent increase, a hundred and two thousand over last year.
Okay, and so today he cut how much?
About a hundred.
About a hundred?
I was saying that, I'd have to go pull up another spreadsheet from my chair. Sorry, I'm doing things as I go.
All right.
That might help. From one ninety-five over to one oh-two, so about ninety-three thousand off.
Okay. All right, well, we appreciate your work, and we'll see where this ends up going.
Yeah, bottom line is...
Appreciate you being here to...
Yeah, bottom line is I need a lawyer. I've been doing this under staff for four years, and I can't do it any longer, and I won't, so give me a lawyer, that's it.
You got to have this, you got one coming, you say, and...
Yeah.
Good.
Maybe, maybe he just said right.
Dave had...
One bill, the other one, I think, is a solid.
Are wages an issue to trying to get people here?
Yeah.
Are they?
Oh, he's paying them ninety. He's getting them.
Yeah.
Right?
Well, I'm not kidding them, but I'm offering.
Yeah.
You got a maybe out of me. But we appreciate it.
All right. Thanks, Dave.
Was anyone else here to offer any other thoughts?
Mark does, and he's got, he's got another thing to be at here shortly.
Gentlemen, I'm here to talk to you, and I don't have the numbers in front of me, but I mean, what I'm coming to tell you about is some things that we've been working on, and I can't, they involve contracts. I can't talk to you about contracts in an open meeting, because there are things that you will have to, you take negotiation, and we've probably done that already, but things that you would have to approve. And so that's not fodder for an open meeting. But what I can tell you is on the, on the detention center side, we have reached out and think that we could have a contract that would bring us somewhere between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to you.
Additional income?
Additional income.
Above what we have figured now?
Above what we have now.
Okay.
And I, and I, I don't know if that's, I think it's doable, but...
Is that for the year, or...
The year.
Okay.
It would be for the, it would be for the year. I think it would be for the year. I think you could put three hundred thousand dollars more in, if that happens, and I don't know if it will. We have reached out, but I haven't got to the decision-makers. It's people that have talked to us before about some additional detainments, so, but I want, but I want to talk to you about that, but I need to talk to you in a closed session about it, because it's contractual, and it's things that you're going to want to talk about. And then the exact same thing on the sheriff's office side, and actually Troy Brown did talk to you about that at the last meeting. And so there have been meetings, so we have a contract proposal that we will probably bring to you, because the other side, I believe, has approved in concept. That would bring in, I think the contract is probably on a six-month trial basis, and I think if the trial basis works, and I have every confidence that it would, then it would be for a year, probably kick off pretty soon, the next thirty to sixty days, and that would bring us in probably a hundred and eighty to two hundred thousand dollars to the sheriff's department.
I put it in?
Yes.
Can I put both these down?
What?
Can I put both these down?
Yes.
Or is it the other, too much of an N?
No, why don't you, why don't you just put them down? Because that's, I think that, one of the detention center, I'm just not sure of, they've reached out to us before, I don't know what their situation is now, but, but I have talked to them.
The sheriff one was, what'd you say, two hundred?
Just put one eighty, one eighty. I think we're comfortable at saying one eighty, although we think it'll probably go to two hundred.
Three hundred for detention rate.
Right. And as far as the budget cuts, we, I mean, we sat here and we had long discussions with you about our budgets. One of the things that we've done, when you talk about reduction force, we have, we've done that, at the detention center, and we explained that to you the last time. We have done reduction force. We did it. You didn't tell us to do it, we did it. And, and we have, we've done an internal staffing analysis that our staff did, and I haven't seen it yet. We've, and we scheduled a meeting, I'm going to see it tomorrow morning, we're going to discuss it. And if there's any other cuts that we can make, well, I can't tell you about that. I mean, I told you that we've already cut four positions, that we're not going to refill. You know, we're authorized to have those, but we are not going to fill them. And in fact, we're probably down six or seven right now, and it's just attrition. I mean, nobody's lost their jobs. There's just enough attrition.
Those four people then would equate to one position, one full-time.
No, the four people is, that's four. Well, yeah, that's, that's four full-time, well, that's four full-time positions.
So are you talking four full-time positions that are twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five?
That's four full-time, we have a, let's say we've got seventy or, let's say we've got seventy-five employees, and most of those are corrections officers, that's four corrections officers that are gone.
To me, that's, that's one person, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five.
I guess you could say, but they're twelve-hour shifts.
Yeah, they're twelve-hour shifts.
Right.
I mean, you...
Yeah, but they're...
But they're not five days a week.
But they're three and a half days a week, or whatever, and...
Four, yeah.
Just throwing it out.
So again...
Four on, four off.
When you, when you put in the full number of hours, twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, that's four people, or four point five people, really, it's a little over four people that have to fill a twenty-four, seven, three, sixty-five, sit, sitting in a chair, a specific position.
Right.
So, so in my opinion, that's one full-time person.
Well, we're going to disagree on that, Mr. Harris.
Yeah.
Because I'm authorized to hire seventy or seventy-five people, and you're telling me four only counts as one. So now you're going to, now you're going to have to say that my seventy-five people is twenty-five percent of that.
Well, I understand what you're saying, and you and I both know that's one, one...
Shift.
Twenty-four percent.
It's, it's one twenty-four, seven person, and three sixty-five.
One person per shift.
Right. And I understand that. And so it's one person missing per shift.
That's right.
And I understand that.
Okay.
Every shift.
Every shift.
Every day.
Every shift.
Three sixty-five.
Right.
Yeah, and I understand that.
Every shift, every day.
So Mark, on over forty, are you paying overtime on twelve-hour days, and you're paying eight hours overtime?
No.
How do you, how do we do that?
They, they get paid straight time, they're in, and that's, it's a government option, yeah, so they're not, no, no, they're not, they're not making, less, because what they, they work, and Mike knows a lot about this, they work four on and four off.
Right.
And so they work more, because that's four twelves on and four twelves off, so anyhow, they do work more than a forty-hour week, but they don't get paid overtime for that standard.
I didn't know, I just...
No, they don't, and there's, there's public safety exceptions to that forty-hour week deal.
It's way down federal labor laws.
Yeah, yeah, federal labor laws allow for different things. So...
They're contractual.
Okay, well, so those, so that helps us on the income side, which ultimately helps us on the tax-asking side.
That's all, all that.
That's half a million dollars, Jim.
Thank you.
About half a million dollars, so we're doing what we can.
Appreciate that.
I mean, we've been, I mean, we, we've been through our budgets, and, and so, I mean, that's where we are. Can, can we cut more things? Yeah, but not, there's nothing significant in there. We got one car in the sheriff's office budget, sometimes we have three. We have zero vehicles in the detention center budget. Some years, we bought a few, and, you know, and I told you, you know, last year, we had this thing, these tasers that we have, and we had a five-year contract for them, and there's nothing in this budget, because we paid it all last year, when we thought we had the money, but anyhow, so that's for five years, you're not going to see tasers in it.
All right.
Very good.
Yeah, appreciate your help on it.
Okay.
We do.
We'll see where we end up here.
I hope our, I hope our, one contract, I'm really confident that the sheriff's department contract will happen. The other one, I, I just don't know, and the people I've talked to who are in this business don't really know.
Oh.
They don't really know. They have reached out before to us, and it's been a few months, and we were, I'll, I will explain that when we get into an executive session, explain why we were a bit hesitant, and you'll understand that. But, but now there's, you know, I've frankly done some more investigation on that, and I, and some of my hesitancy has gone away.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks.
Okay, thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, Mark.
Is there anyone else here that has something specific that they want to talk about, particularly any reductions?
Can you tell us how far, come up, tell us how far you backed down from your original ask sheet?
On the weed side, I gave Lisa a couple items there to reduce. Instead of having the two, I just kind of backed one employee, which can, I was, was going to add up to about thirty thousand, forty thousand more of a cut on the weed side. Dave?
You start off at two hundred thousand, I'm at one fifty-four right now.
That's the cut on the weed side.
That, and we took the legal out, because if he has legal fees, we're going to pay it from the admin chunk, rather than guessing that he may or may not have legal fees this year.
How much does that work on Oregon Trail Road gonna cost?
Sixty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars, unless they find something when they dig it out that is going to be, increase the work.
Or less.
It's going to be that much anyway. It's, those are two pretty big areas, one by closer to the canal there, and one right in front of the farm and ranch, and it's like, there's two smaller ones, but we're not tackling those.
And we don't know what it is.
So we'll see if it's water seepage, or what's going on there until we get that. I did print out a couple sheets for you, because I was, Lisa brought up how my budget was high, so she wanted me to do a comparison to counties, she gave me a list of comparable counties, and we always do this with...
Are you gonna...
So I just did a printout, I just got a little thing here that I called these superintendents and got their information, how our budget compares to their county budgets.
Oh, did you get the miles thing for me?
Yes, and how many miles and bridges they have. As you look through, through those quick, you know, they're all pretty consistent to what we have, the miles and gravel and asphalt kind of fluctuate back and forth. Like Adams County, they probably have actually less than we do, not the same amount of employees. They have a nine and a half million dollar budget. That was last year for twenty-four, twenty-five. Ours was eight million. You can go through all of those, look at them, Buffalo, Dawson, Lincoln, they all range anywhere from eight point two, eight point nine million. The real shocker is Platte County, the very bottom one, which is actually a smaller county, has an eighteen million dollar budget. I don't know where they get it from. They said last year it was twenty, this year they're knocking it down to eighteen.
Dave?
Yeah.
Did you go look it up online?
No, I called them.
You only have twenty-eighty, twenty... You only have twenty-eight and twenty-
Uh, yeah, Platte County has twenty-eight employees. But they have a crazy amount of bridges. They have three hundred and seventy-five bridges. But on the sheet she gave me, in Platte County is only, has twenty thousand parcels and has, I guess it's about the same size of residence as us, but, yeah, I just fell out of my chair when I heard eighteen million for a budget for their road budget. I just did this just to show you in comparison, having an eight million dollar budget last year, I don't think is unreasonable for a county this size to be carrying an eight to, eight and a half million dollar budget, for what we have to fix and what we have here to take care of.
It isn't.
That is- That was pretty much the purpose of, of that, so. I believe on the roadside budget, I had mentioned to Lisa to go ahead and take out the assistant. Did you do that?
Yeah, I believe I did. I just took the salaries and some of your insurance.
Uh, sixty-two thousand?
Yeah, and the, well, then, the insurance piece.
Right. I guess one cut, if you don't wanna chip seal next year, we can cut back on the armor coating. I have my oil bill. I know how much that is. We wanna keep- I have five hundred thousand in for that. Bill for the, uh, oil is just right at four hundred, so I mean, if you wanna take a hundred thousand out of that, we don't chip seal next year. Leave that up to you guys.
We got a good system going right now.
Why would you take that out and not the nine hundred fifty thousand? The nine hundred fifty thousand, that's for sugar factory, or because the city's doing?
No, the nine hundred and fifty thousand, we can actually, I can cut that one down. I have the engineer estimates for the two projects. Those are, are out for bid. The one is Forty Second Street, because I've been getting calls about that now, especially since the city did theirs. And the County Road P in there. So we can take that down to probably seven fifty. That'll include Oregon Trail. Engineer estimates are close to what the bids come in next week. Hopefully, they are.
So that saves us two hundred right there.
That's two hundred thousand.
Above and beyond what I've been talking about.
That's Forty Second Street you're gonna pull out?
No, no, it'll stay in there. Forty Second Street is-
What's the two hundred you're pulling?
The money, the cost, what I had budgeted.
It's gonna be less expensive.
It's gonna be less expensive with the engineer estimates. Forty Second Street is around, Forty Second Street, the engineer estimate is two hundred and ten. County Road P is more, it's up to three sixty, because there's gonna be some concrete in that.
Whatever you have to over the chip seal. We don't wanna buy chip seal.
So that's two hundred and fifty we can take off there.
Is that break, two hundred fifty or two hundred?
Uh, what did I say?
You said two hundred.
Two hundred.
Two, E, where's, where's that at?
P is, um, the, off the seventy-nine E link from Miniter, takes you into Miniter. It's a south road that takes you into Miniter. Off of the seventy-nine E link, E link between-
Stone Gate Road.
Uh, no, it's between Miniter and Melbida. If you turn and take Highway twenty-six to Miniter, you cut across to go over to Melbida. There's a link road there that takes you into the south side of Miniter, takes you by the feedlot, Miniter Feedlot, that road there.
So that link is ours to take care of.
Not the link, just the road into Miniter.
Oh, the one in the middle.
Yeah.
I let you do half your pickups this year, and then half the next. Do they all have to be right now? You got a hundred thousand for pickups.
Can do one. That's just two pickups. It's not like it's six of them. Uh, that's just two.
Sheriff had to knock down to one car. Did I have buildings from forty, 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 forty to fifty-five? That's right? Or is it right, buildings?
That's right. If we don't wanna do the enclosure on the buildings, you know, we can take that out of there, too.
But I went up, is that right, from forty to fifty?
Yes, that's what the quote was, was fifty-five, to enclose it, put the big doors on it. So that, if we don't wanna do that, you know, that certainly can come out of there, too.
How many stalls were you closing, Steve?
That'll be three.
And that's with doors and everything?
Yeah, that's overhead doors.
That's just three.
Yeah, just three. Yeah, they're, they're big doors there.
How big are doors?
I don't know the size of the bays. I guess, off the top of my head.
I thought you were doing that whole string of them there.
No, this is the one that faces south, off of the bridge building there. There's three big overhead doors. We have Parker Dozer and graders in there.
Sixteen-foot or eighteen-foot doors.
Yeah, it's probably that big anyway, yeah. So, and then they're gonna close in the top of one area where the pigeons all hide out and roost, and so we can get that out of there.
So in, in total, Steve, what do you, what do we do to reduce by?
What are we up to?
How much do you back off, how much does he back off from the original?
From the original, that I can tell you to go do what he just did today. We're working as we go. One point one seven.
From the original.
It puts him under his ask from last year.
Okay, Robert had that calculated, that, that he should take off four ninety-three, five ninety-four, and you could still give him a seven percent. His new budget should be two point one one four, three one four.
We didn't know Sheriff was coming in with five hundred thousand.
So-
Right.
I think we need to hold that up, or we're, we're gonna be at two one four. Two, at least two two one million.
I'm down to fifteen million, two sixty-seven. I still need another thirty thousand to do with the flat levy.
To do what, Lisa?
Flat levy, keep the levy flat.
We're looking for thirty thousand at this point, is what she's saying, right?
Other what?
Thirty thousand-
Yeah.
Is what we're looking for.
So did you, uh-
And there's others that can be gone.
Did you take the message boards out from last time?
And where is it at?
Three dash oh, three oh five.
I'll say it. What's that?
Three dash oh, three oh five.
Three dash three.
So, what's about, what's his budget? What's his ask from the county now?
What's his ask from the county? So, okay, let me answer one question and-
You're overloading her here. We're overloading her.
Your signal's three oh, three oh five? Um? I'm at forty-five. I think you're fine.
So, um-
Two million, three two three is the tax ask.
How much?
Three million, two million, three two three.
Steve's? Yeah, okay. What, what about, um, got an email right here before the meeting from Heather. Did hers go down a little bit?
Yeah, she raised revenue.
Oh, by raising revenue?
And she went down a little bit on like some price.
Okay, so do you have that plugged in?
Yes.
Okay. So, and so did you just say that we made it with forty-five thousand or something?
I just said, so Steve's ask is now at seventeen percent over last year. But then a lot of that is due to, we took money from the capital improvements, that I said you couldn't do that this year. We don't have a lot of keynote money either. All on property tax act. I'm down to like thirty thousand dollars.
Oh, you still need thirty?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, I thought that you had come up with some more.
We haven't done anything with the, uh, comms.
Yeah, I think-
She gave you some.
What's that?
She gave you some. She had reached out to me.
Oh, yeah.
What'd she give you?
How about, uh, she gave, she gave off some training, travel. She took off. I'm trying to think if she, yeah, that's about where it was at. I don't know, there's- There's other ones with the percentages you're gonna be looking at, too.
How much did she cut back on that?
Where was the other days? Here, you have, you have, you just gave me the, I need it from the other day. They wanna know how much she cut back. Here is nineteen. Uh, I'd say about eighty thousand, seventy thousand dollars. It was one point, one, one million five seventy-nine to one million five oh seven.
So she is still, she's still gonna be three hundred thousand over last year, isn't she?
Yeah. No, I, I showed two hundred and thirty-seven thousand over last year for tax ask.
Yeah.
Detention Center and Rhodes at three forty-seven, and-
That's all labor there.
What's that? County attorney at a hundred. My own at sixty-eight.
I'm not a fan of judging ours off the tax ask, because that just depends. If we don't have bridge match one year, that's revenue that you have to get from the taxpayer. If we don't carry over the amount, because we get projects done in a year, we don't carry over that money to the next year, that's just more money in the, that has to be made up to tax asking. So our tax ask could always be higher. You know, if we get our projects done in the year, the tax ask is gonna be up there. If we don't, we carry over a million, million two dollars, the tax ask is gonna go down. So ours is, I think, varies so much on the tax asking. I don't know that, I'm not a fan of saying that you can only raise our tax ask by two and a half percent, because there's too many variables in what we carry over, what we get from the government, you know, what our allocation is. Our allocation is a hundred thousand dollars less this year than what it was last year.
Is that based on anything we're doing this end?
No, just getting projects done with, I guess, every year, because I've been planning ahead of time and getting the engineering ahead of time, uh, the year before. So then when the year comes for like now, we get them done that year, because the engineering's done, you don't have the money to carry over. Here, three years ago, we carried over a million dollars. Of course, the tax asking, then, when you carry over a million dollars, is five hundred thousand less than this year. So, I mean, it's, it just fluctuates with our revenue, so.
With other ones, I mean, you've got a, a fund balance, and you're dealing with revenue, and other departments don't, they just have, here's my expenses, here's what I think I'll spend. And I gave you a sheet today that compares what, what was budgeted last year and what was actually spent. That might be something to look at, too. I mean, we do have lot in sum typically. No, I'm not talking the big budgets, but the other ones where it's like, oh, they budgeted an extra thirty thousand dollars and come in short term, they gave it back, but they probably did need to budget in the first place.
There's four million right about here.
Darla, remind me of why yours is thirty-one percent higher? Um, no, I'm looking at tax asking.
What?
Yeah, so I guess-
She's picking up the revenue with it.
Her revenue went down substantially is what she's reporting.
I gave you actual dollars, her revenue versus a projected amount.
And that's why it shows that much more.
So I can give you fifteen thousand for my jury budget. I will tell you, we've scheduled six jury trials in September. In the month of Au- August, we had four scheduled. We ended up with zero. They put it out. But if six go,
It'll be-
We pay for six. If they don't, you don't, we don't pay for it.
And you don't, Darla?
Yes, that's all it is for you.
I'm just seeing-
If it comes off different, you can always come back and say, I was wrong. We have to adjust it.
Yeah, because you have to pay jury. I may not.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, but we can bring it down, make it comparable to previous years, but
Oh.
There's always that chance she's gonna have them all come.
Right. And mileage is high this year. It's seventy cents a mile, so.
I'm just, um, looking at percentages. When we look at percentage change, yours and Lisa's are the two highest ones, the way it appears to me.
And-
And I know Lisa's, part of Lisa's is the deal with Char- Charlotte, so.
Okay, but didn't you, you have to take Charlotte back out of it?
Right, but I think that's already happened. Um, well, the clerk, I, we haven't even talked, but the clerk adjusted her numbers.
We haven't talked about mine yet.
No, but she, Lisa said earlier, there was five people that had given her some numbers, and you were one of them.
I changed what I initially gave her. I'm not gonna make you happy with what I have in my budget request.
Okay, so do we need it? Well, okay, so I think I understand where you're at, and what you just said was you was willing to give up, how much, fifteen?
Fifteen.
All right, so that helped you?
It did.
Okay. But yeah, it was yours and Lisa's that has changed the highest percentage, but that'll help yours now. Appreciate that.
Right.
I'm sorry.
And so Lisa, I'm assuming you're gonna tell us that yours is the extra person?
Mm-hmm, yes.
That's your-
An extra health, or health insurance, an extra, uh, retirement.
Right.
All that, yada, yada.
Salary and benefits for an extra person.
Yes, I put a little extra for printing and publishing, because I was off. Yeah, I put an extra thousand over what I budgeted last year, and then I brought it down. Said five thousand, but I brought it back down to eight hundred. We weren't gonna have to advertise as much for attorneys, and then we just hear that he had an attorney backup.
So you had-
No, no, it is not.
Right, that's what we're gonna talk about here in a minute. So, um-
It would have been if I didn't need the body, but I do.
You, someone said, um, well, we talked at one time about some part-time. We'll talk about that in a minute, but so as I look at it, um, again, if we had two people in your office, now we have three, it's a thirty percent increase, basically.
Yeah.
Okay, and that would suggest a one-person addition at that percentage rate. Okay, so Ms. Kelly, um, maybe we should go to yours, and you tell us about yours. I mean.
Pick up on the screen. Did you want me to print it? Yeah.
Um, we may end up, you may, I don't know, she might be able to do, give us a-
We have the originals, so we don't have the changes.
We've never-
Oh, I didn't-
We've never talked about hers, I don't think.
No, I never-
I just gotta-
Do you have one that's for her?
Well, I did.
I'm Mike.
Tried to save all of those.
What else do I wanna show? Are you ready? No. I mean, I forgot, I'm gonna be up till three. Can you come here at four thirty?
Yeah.
So, did you find her?
Do you want the election one, two, and all the president?
Let me keep looking.
I got marks on it.
Well, you don't have the county clerk. I never presented.
Oh, never mind.
It's already the district court.
The district court. Well, that clerk can it.
I'm not phone home yet.
All right.
Well, I Googled it, and it's the number, and I thought, well, then I'll have to tell you Google was wrong, because I'm telling you, you got me, and I don't do that.
So, um-
Are you looking at this page? I don't, I don't have.
I'm looking on this page, yeah.
Which one that we just got?
Yeah, about percentages there.
Yeah, I'm looking at, what's clerk?
Yeah, county clerk, and she's actually down.
She dropped four thousand.
But she should be down, is what we're saying, because of-
You know, Charlotte.
On this person, so.
But quit saying one last person, because you have a person that I desperately need.
So someone suggested that-
Hold up until Kynick can get up here.
Okay, so there was, the very first day when Ken and I met with you, there was discussion that, um, that, um, Charlotte did more than just payroll in your office.
Correct.
And then we-
You asked me what percentage, and now, I didn't have time that day.
Right.
And now, I think being generous, we came in at twenty-five, and I said, being generous, I'll say thirty percent of her time was dedicated to payroll.
Is what you're saying. And so that sixty percent of her time, you felt, was spent on other things. Well-
What kind of math are you doing?
Seventy percent. Seventy percent was spent on other things.
Correct.
And is that what you've added back in here?
We have added help at a lesser per hour, yes.
Kelly, is she still able to do some of those things in that? She can still do those.
Not at this time.
It would, she may be able to do some other things, but yeah, I think I know the story, so.
Well, I need, I need a hundred percent help at the counter right now. Sorry.
Please start.
Yeah. So what you're suggesting and proposing here, I'm assuming, um, so I'm looking under regular salary clerical. Eighty-three, so I'm assuming you're saying there are two people.
The second column, we started off with eighty-three when she had Charlotte, now we're changing.
It's only ten thousand less, is that correct?
Well, this is, under the yellow part that says officials' request, the third number down tells me eighty-three.
Okay, and yes, it said eighty-three, that was what she originally turned in to me. Now go to the second column, or adjusting the second column.
The county board proposed budget amount?
That's what she turned in to me today, or like.
Seventy.
Friday.
So a difference of ten.
Last minute.
Now, let's go back. So as of today, today, you have four people in your office.
Turning me, yes.
I know, Desa and Bree.
Right, yes, yes.
Four people.
Yes.
Okay. And, um, you're saying, are you saying that Desa gets paid out of election full-time?
Yes.
So all of her salary comes out of election, always has.
I believe so. I don't think I, I don't think, I think I dedicated it to that.
Always has every year, regardless of whether it's an election year or not.
Right, I mean, there's still work to be done towards them, yeah.
So you pay her salary from elections, my suspicion is she doesn't do it.
Oh, I wasn't here at three, I'm sorry.
The.
Cute ring.
Oh, maybe we can get that for cold music.
All right, um. I'm assuming that she, um, sometimes, depending on whatever the situation is, that she can help out in other areas as well, would be my suspicion, which is fine.
That's fine.
To find that we're.
My election worker?
Yeah.
She does a lot of crossover to the other.
Right, which is okay. I mean, it's good, I think, for the county. Okay. Ms. Darla, um, we'll let you talk here in just a minute when we're done. Oh, I thought you needed to talk, you were looking up there, okay.
She does marriage licenses. She indexes the records from our minutes, from all of your meetings. She files our agreements and stuff that you guys approve, puts everything in the big books and stuff for me also.
Previously was five people.
Correct.
And.
And I'm asking for five people again.
Right, that's what these numbers.
It was not my choice to lose my fifth person, and I need the help.
Even that extra thirty percent.
Well, unless you know somebody that can survive on part-time, I would, I would take anything I can get, I need a body.
Yeah, well, certainly the thought and idea of times hiring part-time people is not out of the question.
Well, I had a part-time person, but Matt got hurt, too.
Say that again?
Matt took my part-time person.
Okay.
So, Kelly, this officials' request, the eighty-three thousand for clerical salary. And maybe I'm just confused here, but the county board proposed with seventy-three.
That's, that's still my request.
That's still your.
That's newly submitted numbers last minute to Lisa. We might as well call it today, it was the end of Friday.
And that, and that includes Charlotte's salary that moved up to Lisa's office. Charlotte's moved over to Lisa's.
The seventy-three includes one month of Charlotte and ten months for a new person.
I see, okay, so you're anticipating replacing Charlotte for ten months?
Yes.
And that's what that seventy-three is here.
That's what the math is, yes.
All right, I got you now, I'm sorry.
No, no, absolutely not. Less.
So Lisa, as far as Charlotte is concerned, if her time it takes, took thirty percent down there, and if we're saying her payroll function takes thirty percent up here, then you have.
Lisa's needed help for, Lisa's.
You have extra time from her to be available to do some other things.
I was going to say, Lisa's needed help for, ever since she's been here.
I understand you're filling it up, I'm just saying, if she spent thirty percent of her time down there, it would be thirty percent up here approximately, and there would be additional time available for functions in your office. Okay. What it certainly does is it, um.
I'm here.
It means that. Yeah, we have a, one more person than what we had before. And that was part of our decision.
That was what we did want to do.
We didn't really want to do it, but it's part of what, we were part of the instigator of that, you could say.
You could bring back relief aid.
The what?
You could bring back relief aid and include it in that, some of the duties there, too. Pink Catwoman. I don't know, that would help us if we could.
That's. So, the, you gave us five departments that made a change in their amount, and that's ten thousand, I'm assuming from here, was what you were referring to.
For the, for the third one.
To seventy-three, and that's part of what helped you. In that hundred and fifty thousand that you said.
One percent change.
One percent. Less than last year.
That's not going to come in. Have you reconsidered that appraisal guy you're hiring? I, hey, I'm just throwing it out there. What's that? I suppose.
So for election. I thought it was a lot higher than that.
Your election is up fifteen percent, but I'm assuming it in election years that you've got to be higher.
We have, um, we need to order envelopes. The envelope that, the brown ones that everybody tends to give out in the offices, or get it by mail. And usually we order about ten thousand at a time.
But the difference is, we're not doing the printing normally. We don't have a stockpile from the secretary of state anymore.
Yeah, and special election stockpile is out. So for the school, um, school election, um, and for part of the election we're doing right now, there was still a stockpile with the printer from the state that they had purchased and had given them a stockpile of. And so we only had to pay eight cents for an envelope, and that was just to print, get information. Scottsville County clerk, the address and stuff. Now, um, and we have about half of what we needed to get through this one. And then the other half of the order, we have to pay full price for the envelope and everything. And the other brown envelopes are completely.
You have to, you have to pay for personnel at the polling stations, right?
Yes, the.
And then again, always remembering that in this fiscal year is the primary, in next fiscal year is the.
The general election, yes.
So it does get split over two fiscal years.
And we do receive back a chunk of it, uh, no telling exactly how much. We do pay on the front end and then we bill the political subdivisions. When that money comes back, that all goes back to county general, it doesn't go back to ours. Any special elections that would be a political subdivision other than ourselves, that would also be reimbursable. Um, so we will get a chunk of that back, it's just, it depends on how many people run for how much and how, how big of a section each one has to fill out.
But your primary elections and your general elections, we pay for, did you say that?
Upfront, yes, and then we get reimbursed.
From every one of those subdivisions?
Um, not from any of the state stuff, so where you have the state referendum, but sometimes it's, of course, it's kind of like an unfunded mandate, but, well, I mean, it is.
So theirs is.
Um, we don't get reimbursed for that, and then obviously all the county offices.
All, all the state offices, I mean, secretary of state will be up for election.
So all the schools, all the airports where you can get N R D, all of that will be reimbursed. We did cut down travel in both of them. And we, yeah, everything to do with travel, the mileage, the, the toll fees. Um, Kelly is the only one who travels and usually it's just like regular conferences, like a reelection conference, um, and the training clerk workshop. Um, she usually gets fed there, so she doesn't have to use any money.
And when I do.
We cut out, um, there is no office equipment for the election one, and left a thousand dollars in the office equipment for county clerk. Kind of just in case, you know, a chair breaks or whatever there, so, I mean, that was more of a just in case, there's no plans for that, so.
So. When, when I just glance at all those things, all, everything else except for the labor is pretty minimal, in my opinion. It's very, very little technical increase, I guess, when you. Then, there's still no increase on the upper, but the question was how much that we maybe would have hoped that, that maybe it would have been reduced. Because you're less than before.
She's down four point eight-six percent.
You are. Um, but, I think obviously the, they're. Did we expect some additional reduction? And we're not talking a ton of money, even if we're talking, even if we talk the thirty percent, we're not talking a ton of money, and maybe you've. When you went from eighty-three to seventy-three, that was because of the difference in salary, would you say?
Yeah.
And benefits, yes.
Right, salary and benefits.
You're not hiring somebody at Charlotte's wages.
Pardon me?
You're not hiring somebody back at Charlotte's.
No, no.
So I'm going to say that, yeah, that was helpful and it, to me, somewhat expected. And then the. So I'm thinking, so should there also be at least the thirty percent that we're talking about? Less as well, meaning a part-time person rather than a full-time.
And.
How many hours can somebody work and still be part-time?
Thirty, I mean, you can get full-time benefits if you work thirty hours.
If you worked thirty?
You can get the benefits.
Okay.
So the point to that would be that if you could hold it under thirty, then technically the benefits wouldn't go away.
Kelly, have you, have you thought about in some of the other departments, if there's individuals? I know they have really busy periods in some departments, real busy periods, and other times where they're not so busy. Do some, do some borrowing or something for employees?
But, I mean, like today, what time did we get hit, one-thirty, maybe? And it didn't quit until I came up here late, because all the things that came up, the, the thing is, sometimes you might be sitting there waiting for somebody to come to the counter, but there are other things to do. And then when somebody does come to the counter, we had two couples for a marriage license, we had two people trying to register to vote at a street that we don't even know about yet. Amanda's confirming that with the city of Gearing, and just then, there's all kinds of things to, to have you do. So, I mean, yeah, it'd take somebody for, from another department, but. It's more consistent help in the office and we need to get, we need to get to training somebody in election, the program we use, to be ready.
We're going to have to get more creative, I just think we can hire more people, that's, I just.
Well, I wouldn't have, I didn't need you to hire. Well, I wouldn't have, I didn't need you to hire new more people, I had a person.
This month's payroll is one point six million dollars, take that times twelve, seventeen point six million. Can't continue to hire people, but there's, the money is there. We're gonna have to talk, I'll try to get a work.
And a lot of your departments have overtime.
That's right.
Which is making a hundred deposits dollars.
That's another big issue. That's gotta be fixed.
Well, you're gonna have overtime in our department.
That's another thing we need to discuss, too, I believe, so.
Well, we can't, we're not thinking of the main routes. Like, yes, there are times that, um, there's far less to do, but right now, we're having a, in a time where right now, through next December, both Kelly and I are completely and totally in election, and there is more than you could ever dream to do. And so the thing is, I think we'd be fine with part-time, and like, okay, you don't come in Thursdays, and you don't come in till nine on Wednesday, but we're gonna try to keep it in the hours.
It's getting more creative, that's what I'm looking for.
Well, yeah, but how do you, how hard is it to hire a, a part-time person who is willing to? I mean, there's a lot they have to learn, and some of it is, is hard. They can live off of a part-time salary, they can be available between eight and four-thirty, not like a second, you know, job after their first one.
We started with creative.
So, I mean.
Well, some people certainly.
It's not that we're not saying.
Some people are interested in part-time. Some people are not, but some people are. And, um, so, um.
So I have an open position right now, and the resumes I'm getting are so standard.
Oh.
I, I really, I mean, it's either they're eighteen, nineteen-year-olds, which I would, let's give an opportunity to, but in my office, it takes about a year to train. And then we need a maturity level that I can't rely on an eighteen or nineteen-year-old to have. Then I have others coming in at one in fifty and sixty thousand dollars a year, so that's what I'm getting.
I'd like to tell you what, how I describe that, but I can't, not here. I'll talk to you later, but.
And then you tell me later.
It's hard, I would love to do part-time.
Yeah.
But I can't do part-time.
Well, we certainly hire some part-time people at our office, and, um, but some of them come to our office wanting part-time. Not everybody, certainly not most. But there's some people, and I have to, I have to tell you what I'm seeing somewhat of, not so much at our office, but a little bit. And that's it, and you'll see it at even some of the fast food places or whatever. You're seeing people that are more than sixty-five coming to fill those positions. And that's, I hate it. But if they need the work, the fact is, that's who I'm seeing come. And for some of this kind of stuff, a retired bookkeeper or secretary administrative person in, like in this, if they wanted part-time, maybe they're already sixty-five or something like that, maybe they're already drawn social security and maybe only want part-time. But there are some of those out there, I don't want to say that they're the majority, cause I don't think they are, but there are some people out there that are interested in that.
I heard an ad tonight from Sugar Back Parade, they're starting people at eighteen fifty, you know?
Eighteen, uh, or eighteen fifty, I've just had people in my office tell me the same thing.
Right, and that's for whatever the factory is operating.
And it's shift work and some things like that, so it's not exactly the same. Certainly not the same as county work with county benefits, it's not that, by any means.
And I think the younger generation, I know my kids and, and eighteens to mid-thirties, they want the paycheck, they're not really interested in the benefits. They want that higher dollar amount.
And I have to tell you, in my office, I've been considering bumping people's salaries by three, four bucks an hour with zero benefits, none. With the hope that that means they'll be there, okay? The encouragement is that they be on the job, and that's how they get paid. Because other than that, they're gone fifteen to twenty percent of the time. So. Our whole way of dealing with employees may have to change a little bit, because I'm, I'm seriously considering that in my office. And it's crazy, I can't imagine that, but, yeah, it's, how much of an hourly wage can I get right now, today? And I will say one other thing that I'm also seeing, and that's that there's a lot of employers, we're talking about paying every month, there's a lot of peo, a lot of employers going back to paying every week because the people either need it or something, I don't know what it is, but they want paid every week. And that's, seems ridiculous to me, but a month seems a little ridiculous, too, but every two weeks.
Their future ends on Friday. That's all they're worried about, is show up on Monday. We talked about this, when this payroll thing gets, you know, we're supposed to start paying these people every two weeks or three times. That's something we discussed.
Well, something that we wanted to go to, and then, you know, the
Blood, blood, blood backlash.
Yeah, the existing people was saying they didn't want that. What's that?
Sometimes you just have to make a decision.
Well, I agree, I, I think we ought to do it every two weeks.
So I would like to request at some point of this meeting, an executive session, for real. I'm not comfortable talking about some of the stuff that you guys need, and I need Lisa with us.
Let's do it, girl.
Well, I didn't know if you want to break while people are here to talk to you.
I don't know the week to winter unless, or if you got something to quit or.
You got some, you got a?
Gotta be a personnel issue.
Personnel issue.
To discuss a personnel issue.
Okay.
And for the protection of that.
Who do you want in there? The board, Lisa, Kina.
This is about a particular individual? This is about an individual or a position? That individual been notified?
I'm talking about my budget.
We can't do a budget in the executive session.
I'm talking about a person in my budget.
Position.
Yes. Jane, I wish, I wish I'd have told Jason, yeah, show up.
Yeah.
Well, that makes sense, here, here it makes sense to me, because there's only so many positions down there, and if we start talking about the job duties, duties of that position, then we could, then we could easily identify who that person is, and so that makes sense to me.
I asked Jason to be here for the four-thirty meeting, and I am willing to wait for that if you want me to.
Tomorrow.
I think we should until he gives us a green light on that.
But be ready, cause I'm asking for it.
That's fine, I don't have a problem doing it.
Yeah.
Make sure to sleep.
Fair.
Yeah, so.
Am I done for now?
Uh, no, I don't think we're done with it yet, but we might be. So I guess that motion's gonna die for lack of second.
My, my apologies for putting you guys in a bad spot.
All right, so we're still on the budget for Ms. Kelly. And, um, I don't know if anyone's, um, so basically, if I'm understanding it correctly, we're within fifteen thousand dollars of where we want to be.
Oh, you're there.
Are we there now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I thought we were.
I'm at, sitting at like forty-two, forty-five.
But I'm not willing to approve this budget yet, tell me this, cause it's.
Well, we're talking about.
I want to talk about this.
You guys haven't approved anybody's budgets yet, technically.
Tax pasting, fifteen, two fifty-two, and, well, I guess that's the flat levy is fifteen, two ninety-nine. Anyway, I'm sorry, that's the flat levy amount, so that's what I was.
So we're down to that?
Yes, you are, and, I mean, we didn't talk to, Darren Duncan said he would go back to last year's amount.
Okay.
Which would be at like two thousand nine hundred sixty-three dollars difference. He said he would go down, I, we haven't talked about the county surveyor, that one's always a fun topic.
Okay.
Or, I mean, so I think veterans stay pretty flat.
What were his total expenditures last year? Cause he was, he was up there pretty good, I thought.
Surveyor?
Yeah.
Cut him way back.
Oh, he was up, he was up to fifty thousand last year.
We had, remember, he had two claim, one claim that didn't get paid.
I should be budgeting him at forty-nine, four oh five, he came in at forty-nine, two sixty-five. We had to give him a little extra budgeting authority, so this year he's at fifty-five thousand, four ninety-three.
Cutting him back is the same as last year, we, we can regulate how much he spends.
Okay, what I don't understand on that one. You guys, what I don't understand on that one is paying one, one claim for one fiscal year, and then again for the next fiscal year. When the twenty-three, twenty-four is at twenty-eight, seven. Cause he missed what, twenty-three thousand or twenty-five thousand?
He, he missed, he didn't get it paid in time.
Right. So is that holding him steady at that then?
I think he might be a cycle behind.
Year?
He made up for it in twenty-four thousand, one ninety-one. And he didn't complain this year. I think he's okay. So we could cut him back on his supply shop.
And?
To one thousand, which is what he had last year, is that okay, or?
To how much? The forty-nine, nine, oh, four oh five, is that what you're suggesting?
That's what I'd suggest.
Which is what he did last year?
Okay, now am I done?
Yeah, at least down, this one down to five thousand. So fifty thousand, four ninety-three.
That your suggestion?
Forty-nine, four ninety-three is where I'm at, right there, if I take out some of the supplies.
All right.
He never spends.
There you go, you won't need to buy those.
Forty-nine, four ninety-three, let's do that.
Forty-three is it, right?
Right, whatever that was that you said.
That's what I said.
Whatever she said.
Four thousand for supplies, but like you said, he never spends over five hundred bucks, should we take it down to?
Well, um, I think you can take it down to that at this point.
We'd be fine.
Fortunately, you're saying we've faded technically.
Yeah.
If there's anything else to be taken off, we can.
There's no harm in keeping on going.
Kelly's after we have the executive session, in that la, latest part of our meeting.
Well, we've got the, a scheduled four-thirty start. I've got something on there, Lisa has something on there, and then we're gonna go back to budget discussion, but we'll have Jason here at four-thirty.
I had, I had three o'clock.
You got three o'clock on my end.
Right.
We have a three o'clock budget discussion. I'd already advertised for preliminary levy setting, the resolution for that. Four-thirty start on Tuesday, and we added the three o'clock on Tuesday afterwards.
Are we gonna need it now that we're?
We had a special tomorrow is a special meeting, once we got values from Robert, and I could calculate the preliminary levies.
Part was a special meeting.
And then, last week, it was decided, or the end of the eighteenth, I believe. Eighteenth, or the Friday before that, whenever I was trying to figure out if I could advertise.
Oh, yeah, it was Friday before.
We added three o'clock start to today and tomorrow. And then I've got a recess, if you look at your agenda, I put a recess.
So the question that we might have is, do we and I know we've advertised it for three o'clock, but do we need that time?
I don't know, right now we got, I've had a question, district judges, I never did agree personally. They're maybe thousand dollar budgeted for this thing. Could be another twenty.
Their issue is, was what? Attorneys, attorneys, right?
Maybe, you'll need it.
That's, and that's just a guess, cause they have no idea what they're gonna have.
And it's kind of like Darla's situation, where it's like, I could bring it down if I need it, then we have to adjust.
She could, she could have, she could have six juries next year, seven juries.
Or they could.
And what we have done.
How much are we below right now?
Go ahead, Kina, while she's looking it up.
Well, the numbers that, um, they had gotten her like a week or so ago.
Almost fifty thousand.
Fifty thousand?
Forty-six thousand, two eighty-nine.
Less than.
To keep it flat, levy flat, we are for about forty-six thousand, two eighty-nine, but you can still go to paying postcard.
Forty-six thousand less than the flat levy?
Yes.
Okay.
This is what amount would be the flat levy, forty-nine, two ninety-three, and there's where I stand.
We, we're gonna lower the levy?
By a fraction.
Yeah.
But it's still a minimal fraction.
Forty-six thousand, but it shows up with hundreds.
A minimal fraction, yeah, I know, I know.
Well, how much further do we have to go to get rid of the pay postcard? We'd have to go back to that fourteen, two, or fourteen, five.
Seven hundred.
Million dollar.
Anyway, do you need your meeting tomorrow?
What's that?
Do you need your meeting tomorrow?
Yeah, that's the question.
Where this started?
Uh, Kelly, what would happen if we declare here that we might not need that three o'clock time? But we're, but we're still gonna need some time at the end of the budget, so do we still need to show up for that three, or?
What are you gonna do at three o'clock?
Yeah, we're gonna need Jason.
Jason, come here, tell me, thirty, six, all up here.
I don't, I don't, I, I'll get ahold of him, I'm, I don't know if I can say the three o'clock meeting was canceled, that you guys will still be meeting for your four-thirty meeting, I, I don't know.
We've scheduled meetings before and didn't use them.
Well, how do you notify the public? How do you notify the public?
They should, but obviously there's no one there, but it could be. It could be.
Kelly, keep in mind that if we're talking about a particular individual or a, for a personnel or, or, uh, executive session, they need to be given the opportunity to do it in an open session.
Ask Jason about.
And, and if you're talking just about staffing, I don't know whether that's.
I'll get, I'll get some clarification for, for my situation, yeah.
I think the fact that this person holds one position that only is covered by one job description, and there's no other people that also have that job title, I think you could say the executive session protects, we're, we're talking about the position and the, and the challenges with the position, but the fact that only one, one person holds that position, we need to be able to talk about it in an executive session to protect.
And every, every person in my office has one title, so.
That makes sense.
So talk to Jason.
I will.
He needs to be the deciding person.
Okay, am I free to go?
Yeah, I guess, the only, well, the only question we have is, do we need to be, do we need to be here at three o'clock? You want to ask Ja, you want to ask Jason that, too, and then be sure and email us or text us or both, yeah?
Yeah, thank you, we call them now.
And then we'll look at it.
Owen, how do I cancel at three o'clock, are we done with everybody for today?
Yep, I think so, let's quit, for today, we're done.
I think so, I mean.
Make a motion if you're in.
Well, I think, um, we've got to where three people want to be. And, um, so I think that that's.
You gotta love it too, Mark.
No, I don't love it, but.
I, I was gonna throw out one idea here.
Hey, I'm sorry, um, we had a question, just a second, I'm putting you on speaker, we're sitting in a budget meeting, okay, and there was a question that came up. Okay, Jason says hi. We have scheduled and advertised a three o'clock budget meeting tomorrow, that would then adjourn to a regular meeting at four-thirty if we need it, but we really don't need the budget session, can we just cancel that, or do we still need to meet, is that the question, basically?
Yeah.
What's your thoughts?
Is sort of three o'clock meeting tomorrow not be needed?
Yes.
I think that portion of it could just be canceled, and the regular meeting could start at four-thirty.
Jason, this is Kelly, can I just put a sign on the front door and the commissioner room doors, just like, I would put the agenda, that the three o'clock can, could have been canceled, but they're, they're still meeting for the four-thirty meeting?
Yeah, I think so, and maybe just a note on the website.
Okay, yeah, we can do that.
I don't know how to do a note on the website.
A note on the website?
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you, thank you for answering.
You're good.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, and I don't know whether those are for today or for tomorrow.
So I just wanted to throw an idea out. I know the, uh,
Yeah, they're tomorrow's.
The state legislature is throwing around the idea that they may freeze county levies and make it impossible for us to increase the levy.
For this year?
Where are you going with this?
For future years.
Future.
I guess that was a discussion Ryan Harden had with Regent and the NACO has been mentioned that this is being discussed across the state, various senators, with, with counties across the state, so. I don't know how likely that is. You know, how would you freeze Scotts Bluff at a point? Three-seven levy, and freeze somebody else at a point? Three-five levy, I don't know how that's constitutional, but.
It can happen.
Here, what do you think you're going? You know, if, if something like that was to occur, then that means, you know, there's two different trades at the bottom. You know, do we raise the levy so we have room to play with in the future? Or do we tighten the bell even more and restrain future iterations of county government from being able to grow too much?
You can see how growth is right now, where we got somebody wanting to hire, you're gonna, are you gonna?
It's not just a, it's not just a want, Russ, it's a need.
We're gonna have to put more on hiring if this, this, nobody would hire.
I think it's the, I think it's the legislature's way of restraining government. It might be their way of shrinking government, because that means we're, we're probably gonna grow at a, at a rate that's lower than inflation. So then that forces the government to become small.
But this governor has cut how many state jobs?
He's wanting to cut five hundred million. He's wanting to cut five hundred million this year.
He's cut thousands, I think, of state jobs.
Jobs. And we continue to.
We can't cut one.
Like, in the future, looking at that, what you said. You know, you're, you're stuck here, and five years from now, if things go up and up, you can't, you can't raise that, and you can't do growth, and you can't do stuff.
But what you do is you look at programs, and are all programs the state have, are they necessary? And you'll find that there's a vast lot of those programs are not necessary. You know, we've kinda enabled a lot of people to survive off you and I's wages when they could be out there working, or they could be out there doing other things, and there's a lot of programs out there that really don't benefit anybody except they take you and I's tax dollars. And that's what they're doing at the federal level, that's what they're doing at the state level.
And we're gonna have to do the same thing at some point.
I think the counties are probably pretty darn efficient at what we do.
I was gonna say, with their, whatever, and it's very programmed.
Well, I'm not saying the county, the state, the state, yeah, state has what.
I'm not saying programs, I'm saying people. We may, we may be tightening our belts and testing up some costs. Because you're taking a two-and-a-half percent increase, for your record, since I've been here.
I guess, to me, that discussion is very preliminary, and, um, to me, um, the likelihood of that happening, and I just looked at that sheet that Lisa made up for us, have we look at mill levies on those, some are as low as point-two-five, and then up to ours, which is point-three-six-seven, and everywhere in between that, and, um, so, yeah, she's got it up right there. Anyway, um.
Those can't be that much higher value.
Well, I've got that on the sheet, and some of them are, but not all of them.
You know, Commissioner, she didn't consider the COLA question.
Well.
Didn't consider what?
COLA. I just threw that out, because I'm sure people will ask, and it's like, just.
It's gonna have to be basically in there. It's gotta, if you're suggesting that we're gonna do a COLA and it's gonna be on top of this, then we gotta start over.
Yeah.
Exactly. I'm just throwing it out there that, is that what our answer, we're down to where we're at?
So, have we figured out what two, two-and-a-half percent looks like, and what three percent looks like?
Maybe you should keep your head going.
I mean, we're gonna have to find more cuts to fit the, to fit that in the fifteen-two number.
Yeah, because I did not, I just, just thought of that. I'm sorry, I didn't bring it up sooner.
Have, are you gonna suggest that every budget in there has not figured any of that in? Well, certainly the.
No, I thought we were told not to.
Certainly the union.
Range stepping increases is involved.
Yeah, the union people are figured at the higher price.
I'm not so sure. You know, stuff with, with, what they come to you with, but they don't, theirs are different.
They don't, or, that is, no, it's not a COLA, but it's a increase in wages, which is about the same thing, and so the point to all of that would be, if, if, um, we considered the COLAs to be, um, acceptable, then that money would end up, in my opinion, coming out of whatever's down below that line. Personnel line.
Yeah, from your supply items.
From whatever else you have available to you.
We're not changing it at this point, so. Anyway, it just hasn't been brought up. People do ask.
Steve, has it figured in your budget?
We told everybody not to put them in the budgets.
But if we had a union contract, we did put that in there.
Not a COLA.
Right.
It has to increase to bring them up for their comparison.
Yes, that's in the budget.
That, that is, that is in my budget. And it occurs, and I believe it's in Sheriff's intention, I'm not gonna tell you for sure, but it is.
Yeah, what kind of percentage?
Um, yeah, Com Center was pretty significant. Sheriff wasn't much. It was, I don't have a percentage for you.
But detention was higher.
Yeah, we still negotiate that.
And, Robert, we won't know on some of them, because they're still in negotiations. We don't. But I don't think the ones that we've talked to, I don't think any of them were excessive at all, as far as their increase was concerned. Most of those comparability. Yeah, no. Yeah, some are very minimal, but there, there are, there are those that, depending on what category you're looking at, some may be a little higher than others. Again, that was all taken off the comparability studies.
So when those, when we don't have the COLA in there, then apparently, um, some of those calculations certainly have been whatever step increases they thought they may add to the unit.
Right, right. Step increases are included. And last year, a one percent increase, or it was like, one percent would've been like sixty, sixty-one thousand dollars. But she would just be a little more. One percent, so make it two percent, a hundred and forty thousand.
So, um, Russ was just mentioning, um, about the issue of, how much did you say, one point-six million?
One point-six million, just months payroll.
So that'd be?
There's a lot of overtime.
If we take two-hundred-and-eighty employees, divide that, that's five thousand something a month, or the equivalent of sixty-eight thousand dollars a year average salary, and.
Second year commissioner, everybody.
Right. Sixty-eight thousand.
Thousand, it's insurance, two thousand dollars a person.
Well, that one point-six million is a good question as to whether or not, yeah, that's gross amount when you add in all benefits, you think?
That was a benefit.
So that could be a question. So like, retirement and that kinda stuff? Not just.
I don't think retirement would.
This isn't what they get.
I think that retirement would be another question.
I would like to certainly look at that as a line item sometime in the next couple of months.
To hear what, which one?
Look at the, that, our gross payroll and things like that. Alright, so, trying to figure out where are we here? In my opinion, we're at the, whatever you just called it, the one, I'm gonna write this down. As of.
Do you want me to print it?
Oh, no, you don't have to. But as of right now, you were forty-six thousand less, I thought, than what we needed. Right, and so that's a total of how much?
Fifteen million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand.
So you're at fifteen million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand tax asking as of today.
Fifteen million, two forty-eight.
Twenty-five, twenty-five. At four fifty-eight PM. That's where we're at. And, um, to me, that's, to me, that's gonna have to include the COLA. Or else we're starting over.
I'm not starting over.
I'm not interested in starting over.
We've been through so much together already.
It's. Fifteen million, two-hundred-and-forty-seven thousand.
That's what Kelly just said.
I think we've dropped, we have dropped road and bridge.
Okay, we're gonna call it three forty-eight then.
We've dropped road and bridge below last year's asking.
We've dropped a whole bunch of stuff, yeah.
Okay, and what we have not, we're looking at taking off, what, three thousand off of Com Center? On a three-hundred-thousand-dollar increase? That needs to be looked at.
Alright, are you saying we still need to look at something?
I am. I think that Com Center ought to be a little closer to where they were last year.
No, well, they also lost, I mean, I'm not gonna say no, no, but, um, a chunk of revenue is gone right now.
Okay, where's that, where did that come from?
Foxview County. That was a hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars that she doesn't get to include. So hopefully, we can steer some, get things in order and steer some efforts to get, to contract out of some of those.
There had to be a reason we lost it. Has anybody researched that? It just, it just didn't end.
It just ended because they, they come to an agreement up there, they're gonna work together, so they took their
Yeah, they're going.
Their dispatch back.
So the, the reason we got it in the first place was because the county and the city were having a dispute. That has been resolved, so it's not that we did on our part.
I don't think it's.
Well, then if that's the case, we're not doing that much work either, not putting that many people. I mean, that had to take some people to do that.
Oh, no, they, we used to save people.
Then we should be able to.
You gotta come up here.
Save that much now.
Answer, we can.
What are you gonna save? Because you don't have the income.
Right.
Don't have, that's not income, but you aren't doing the calls either, so you're not doing the work, you're not.
But we're using the same amount of people.
I thought they were gonna hire one.
No, they didn't do it.
Troy said they were gonna hire one.
They didn't.
They didn't do it. Go ahead, Rob. I, I just wanted to bring up, just as a reminder, Sheriff said that, that there was one three-hundred-thousand-dollar chunk that was maybe. Right. To me, that's a fifty-fifty at best. So, you may, he, I mean, okay, if things go south, we, we agree at fifteen-two. He comes back at the end of the year and asks for three-hundred thousand more dollars. Then, that's, that's where you might be. You're still at, you're, you're still at fifteen-two tax asking. We're gonna dig it out of some other place. Right. I'm just, just wanna point that out. We're not, we're not taxing anymore. Yeah, I, I agree, because I don't feel real comfortable with that one.
Yeah, I, I did.
I'd say he's, he's telling us fifty-fifty.
At best.
Would you like him to come back? Could he come for an executive session on that, or do we have to decline it?
No, I don't think there's any reason to talk to the sheriff.
He said he did wanna tell us that he details except an executive session.
Oh, that's right.
That one part, yeah.
That's why I said. That's not what you would like to get.
I weren't, weren't including that change at this point. Guess.
Yeah, he told her to, he told her to take that one. It's balanced.
Add two.
Or add two, I'm sorry.
Well, and I say we'd have to pull it in from someplace else, or we could simply, he may have to cut.
He might have to deal with that, yeah.
Right. Cut some other places. Or we split it or something.
I don't think we're in any position to add extra people. I mean, the budget looks at this point.
I think.
There's eighty thousand in that.
I believe in the whole situation that the intention was to not add any people. But I also believe that when we asked the county clerk to do what she did, that we put her in a situation where you're basically taking people away from her. Or at least a part-time person, at the very least.
And we would have not asked for anyone else.
And to the, right. If, if we wouldn't have done that, they wouldn't be asking for someone. And so, um, to me, part of that comes from us.
Me.
So. But anyway.
We would've been short of them.
Um, but they certainly would've been, yeah, able to rehire or whatever, and that. So, that's my only issue, and that's, I think, when you're talking about adding a person, that's what you're talking about, I think.
And that needs to be looked into.
Well, I think, um, we'll.
What needs to be looked into? Hiring this other person.
Well, and we already said that the clerk's budget, we're not gonna, and we're gonna talk about that after the executive session tomorrow. So we already said that. Do we need to do anything further tonight?
I was just looking at the Com Center budget, and it looks like the uh, officials request for part-time salary and overtime. We already lowered those numbers, is that right? Are we going with the county board proposed amount, or are we going with official request?
County board proposed.
Two thousand.
I lowered more than that.
Oh, yeah.
I should, yes, because if we get.
I didn't have that sheet, I was just looking at the original sheet.
Yeah, no, I, I.
Say that again, Lisa.
Last year, the expenses, one million, nine-hundred-and-thirty-six thousand is now at one million, nine-sixty-one. She's not over her last year's budget ask.
So it's less than three percent, would you say?
Of expenses, yes. Now, overall, that's not gonna be so much because of the revenue.
But that's what we're looking at is total. That's what I think, I think we're looking at, um, you know, nitpicking, I think we're looking at total numbers.
Well, I mean, we're still guestimating those numbers for overtime and part-time salary due to those, those travelers, we don't know how much we're gonna have to use them. So what?
We've actually reduced them.
It's half, yeah, okay.
Right.
So where do you start paying overtime, at anything over forty?
Yes, that for the, the travelers, there, there is not an overtime.
Right, but if you went to twelve hours, you're gonna have eight hours of overtime whenever you get a B code.
No.
Yeah, cause if they're like, they're like the sheriff.
What she said, at forty, you pay overtime.
At forty, but they don't work, they don't work. Week, they're, two weeks a month, they're thirty-six. At two weeks a month, they're forty-eight.
So they work overtime.
They do have overtime.
So what I'm getting at, they're still overtime. Whether, no matter where you hide it, it's in.
Oh, so we open try to hide it, it's there.
I keep asking this question, and all I get is no, we're not paying overtime, and how we are. I've asked it fourteen different ways now, and I finally got the right answer.
I, I buttoned it over time.
Mister Blues told me repeatedly, we don't pay overtime.
When you talk about a forty-eight hour.
I'm talking about forty-eight hour day, a week.
Agency or private industry creates a forty-eight hour a week, work week for somebody, under federal labor laws, they don't have to pay him that overtime.
We do though.
They get forty-eight hours straight time, then they work after that, it's overtime.
Not for us.
Now, you guys are contracts, so it's a different, different story.
Well, even the other employees, you're talking, the detention center does that.
Well, and, and, and there's federal agencies that have forty-eight hour work weeks the same way.
We're not doing.
And they don't start overtime until they go past forty-eight. Say they work another part of a shift, and that part of the shift is overtime.
But ours starts at forty, right? Our overtime starts at forty, just like my, my company, we pay in there.
I must, I don't remember, when is that um union contract coming up?
No, like, anytime now.
For hers?
Yes, whenever we get a breather to work on it, yeah.
Okay.
We started on some of it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, um, so the point is, it's still in negotiation, is what I'm considering it.
So it's not totally worked out yet, then?
We haven't approved it, up here, have we?
No.
It hasn't, it hasn't been brought to us.
I think it's right on my back.
So that's the time that we can look at.
But we're gonna work it through the budgeters.
Well, she's, she has the, she has the amounts figured in.
Right.
But if we don't approve the contract, then, then she'll have yeah, it'll be basically less than she pays. We'll see what, what happens. Alright, anyone else with a thought that we need to discuss anything here right now? And then, my understanding is, we're not coming at three o'clock, we're gonna come for the four-thirty meeting, and then that four-thirty meeting will be extended enough to do whatever budget stuff we need to do at the end. But it'll be part of the four-thirty meeting, the way I understand it. Okay? Alright? Anything else? Meeting's adjourned. Thank you for being here.
Thank you.